Yake to step up and take on the chair. And we'll move ahead and hopefully the Council McKay will be able to join us. I see that you started recording, so I think we can, Dan, whenever you're ready, I think we can dive into the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, it's a little after four o'clock, we'll call the special meeting to order. The first item of business is the adoption of the agenda. We have a recommendation here that the agenda for the August tenth, twenty twenty one Township of Wellington North Recreation. Parks and Leisure Committee Meeting be accepted and passed. So I guess.
I shall move that.
I can second that, then Mike.
Or do you want it the other way around, Mike, or?
No, that's fine, that's fine, we'll carry on.
All right, so all in favor?
Yeah.
That's carried. All right, any disclosure, puny interest.
Oh, sir.
All right, see none. The minutes of the previous meeting, July sixth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one were approved by council on July twelfth, twenty twenty one. Business arising from the minutes, we have the wayfinding signage. Mandy, I think this is, this is your cue.
Thank you very much, Chair Yake. So what I'm going to do is share my screen here. Okay, so I just wanted to bring this in front of committee. One last time here, there was a slight change after went to council. So council had voted to remove the Simply Explore from the top of the Mount Forest logo. As this space had some white area there, and because the Arthur logo included the EST date. We asked for the manufacturer to put it. Eighteen seventy nine, as this is slightly different than the conversation that was, did we just lose member film? Just gonna stop sharing for a moment, we did.
Okay, Mandy, yeah, we've lost quorum with it, Brian, so we'll hang on for a second and hope that he can jump back on.
There he is.
Just when you think things are going along nice, worry about that.
So I will share my screen one more time to worry about that. So I just wanted to bring it to committee's attention then of that, of that change outside of that, the signs remain the same. So bringing it forward to receive for information, okay, with proceeding as is. Switching to Arthur there.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mandy, how, how big physically are these signs? Like, what sort of dimensions are they?
So they range, they can make them size we would like. These ones are two and a half by three and a half, I believe. Depending on the location, they may switch in size to ensure that they're legible. Ones on Main Street will be slightly larger just because they will be elevated. Other ones on the side of Frederick Street.
Good, good, thank you.
Yeah, I had one question too, Mandy. How many, how many locations are there for, is it the same amount of locations in both Arthur and Mount Forest or?
No, there's not. So in Arthur, we have six locations. And in Mount, we have eleven signage locations.
Okay. All right.
And that, sorry, and that's simply to do with the location of the recreation amenities in Mount Forest. They're more spread out, so we need more signage to sign to destination. Where in Arthur, a lot of the amenities are located in a central location, so less signs were required.
Sure, okay. All right. Well, they look good, nice, the adjustments look good and it'll be nice to see them, see them go up, will they go up this year? Yeah, they will.
Yes, three, Chair Yake. Public Works has offered to support us with the installation of these, so once they pass through council, they will be ordered. And they will be installed later this year is the plan, however. Things may change according to our supplier, but yes, the plan is.
Very good, good. Any other questions?
Nope, I'm here.
No, okay. All right, so we have a recommendation here that the Recreation Parks and Leisure Committee received for information. The final design of the recreation amenity wayfinding sign as presented. All in favor? Here, what, do I need to move her in a second for that, Mike, or how are we?
I think we can adjust, we can, we can handle that.
It's a pretty short list to choose from.
I don't know how, I don't know how I could forget that, with just the two of us here. All right, moving on, we have deputation, two deputations here today. And the first one is Jensen Williams, regards to Take Back the Night.
I've just moved Jensen into the panelist's room, there she is.
She is.
Welcome, Jensen, the floor is yours.
Hey, thank you so much for having me, I'll just share my screen if that's okay, I have some slides for you folks this evening. All right, well, thank you so much for having me, my name is Jensen, I use she and they pronouns. And I work as the public educator over at Guelph Wellington Women in Crisis. And I want to thank you folks for having me, and also just wanting to share some information with you today. A little bit about our agency, Guelph Wellington Crisis, and about an upcoming event that we're hosting in the fall. Called Take Back the Night and ways in which you folks can support that. So I'll start with a little bit of information about Guelph Wellington Women in Crisis. For those who haven't heard of us before, we're a feminist, community-based, not-for-profit organization. That has been serving Guelph and Wellington County since nineteen seventy seven. Providing free services to those who experience different forms of gender-based violence, so sexual violence, domestic violence, and human trafficking. In terms of why our work is important. It's estimated that one in three women will experience sexual or domestic violence in their lifetime. One in six men are one in two trans and non, gender non-conforming individuals. Any given night, over six thousand women and children sleep in shelters because home is not a safe place. And we know that different groups of individuals experience violence at higher rates than others, such as indigenous women, young women, and women of color. So in terms of the programs and services that we offer at Women in Crisis. As I mentioned, all of our programs and services are free, so we're really trying to make those services as barrier-free as possible to those who need the most in the community. We are located, we have an office in Guelph, as well as our Rural Women Support Program, which serves all of Wellington County. And that rural program has offices in Aaron, Fergus, Mount Forest, and Palmerston. But a little bit about our services, we provide trauma counseling through our Sexual Assault Center for anyone who's experienced any form of sexual violence. We have our Transitional Housing and Support Program and our Emergency Shelter, Mary Ann's Place, which provides access to both emergency shelter and connections to long-term independent housing. We have our Family Court Support Program, which supports those who have or are experiencing abuse and are navigating family court. And our Anti-Human Trafficking Program, which provides a wide range of services to those who have or are experiencing trafficking. And finally, we have public education, which is me, who runs all of our education and awareness events. As well as provides workshops and trainings for free to youth and organizations, workplaces, and more. Just a little bit about us. In the last year, we've served over a thousand clients, our crisis line has responded to over three thousand calls. And with it, with the pandemic, what we really have focused on is providing clients with what they need most. In terms of groceries and food assistance, and so in the last year, we've also provided over twenty thousand dollars worth of gift cards to clients. Just why I really am here tonight is to talk to you about an event that we hold called Take Back the Night. And some other ways that you folks can get involved with that. So this is a list of different education and awareness days that we run throughout the year to really can keep the conversations about gender-based violence going. Whether it's about human trafficking or International Women's Day, Sexual Assault Prevention Month, Pride Month. And leading up into September, which we do Take Back the Night each year. So for those who haven't heard of Take Back the Night before, this is an event that happens locally every year. But it also is part of a global movement that started in around the nineteen seventies to connect women. With efforts to essentially reclaim their communities and make them safe for themselves. The name Take Back the Night, you know, a lot of women don't feel safe walking home alone at night, or even just existing in the world. And so this event that we do each year is really to raise awareness about sexual violence. And also to engage community members and seeing themselves as part of that solution and ending it. And so this is an event each year that we typically will do in the Guelph area, and we have, you know, a rally with speakers, and then we typically call the march. However, we, because of COVID, haven't had this event for, for two years now. So what we're doing this year is that we are doing a live stream event. So we'll have some of our speakers in person where folks can watch online. But the other way that we want to engage community in that feeling of something that they can do to engage in. But also in that march that they could do with their friends, their families, their loved ones, is to do a campaign called Take Back the Trail. So what we would love to do is to have educational and awareness signs placed on trails and parks throughout Wellington County. As well as Guelph, to help engage community members in these conversations about sexual violence. As well as to raise awareness about who we are in the community and the virtual event that we're doing. So kind of the rationale behind this, this education and awareness campaign. Is that it's something to reach folks who might not be connected to our programs and services, might not know who we are. As I said, this event has typically been Guelph-based, and we really want to extend that outreach of that to throughout Wellington County. And to spark conversations about Take Back the Night. So we've developed and created kind of some, some small lawn signs that, so it's a series of five that we would like to put in. Two parks in North Wellington area, the Arthur Community Park Trail and Murphy Park in Mount Forest. And I have some images on the next slide to give you an idea of what that could look like. So, you know, kind of putting them, you know, to the side of the trail where they're not in the way, eye-catching, you know, a nice bright purple color. And really, you know, so folks can kind of like stop and think and look, oh, what's that, and, you know, read more about it. So this is a close-up of what the signs would look like. So starting off with some statistics about the amount of women that experience sexual violence in their lifetime, and talking about how different groups are impacted. We have information there about our website, our social media, and the QR codes. That's like folks can scan them on their phone, and it'll take them to our event page for Take Back the Night, so they could learn more. Some different ways that community members can engage in efforts to end sexual violence, so some different actions that folks can take in their personal lives to be part of that work. Again, just about Take Back the Night, what that is. Asking, you know, how can folks participate, how can folks engage? And another thing too, that we would love to see if, if folks are out and see these to take photos, to tag us, to help spread that word and that awareness. And then lastly, the last kind of image there would be, you know, information about our programs and services, our crisis line. So if folks are seeing this, and you know, might not have known that we've existed, they'll know who to reach out to for support, how to connect. But that's kind of the spiel of our Take Back the Trail campaign and Take Back the Night in general. My contact information is there if folks have any questions or want to reach out after today. As I mentioned too, we do have offices throughout Wellington County. So if you ever wanted to get in touch with the folks who are working in your communities as well, their contact information is there as well. But that is all from me, I hope I didn't go too much over my time here, but I'll just stop if anyone has any questions at that.
All right, thanks, Jensen, for that, that's some pretty interesting, interesting information. Any questions, Brian?
No, I don't really have a question, other than I want to thank Jensen for her presentation. It was, it was very good, it's a neat idea, I think, and I, like a lot of things, you need to have the conversation before you can. You know, spread the awareness in the community, and I think this is a good way of doing it, I support the initiative, absolutely.
Very good. So is this, how do we, is this something that you get involved with Mandy and Tom? And Matt to, to get organized, is that, is that how we would proceed with this, or where do we go from here, I guess?
I have been in touch with Mandy about this project so far, who has brought me to this meeting to kind of let you folks know about it, to bring you in the know. But really, we just want to make sure that what we're doing is okay with you folks, that you folks support it. And that it's not going to get in the way with like any groundskeeping activities that's going on, or any other park events that you folks might have going on. So whatever you folks need me to do, I'm happy to do it to make it happen.
All right, Tom.
Hi, Jensen, I don't believe you'll interfere with any of our work or anything. My only question is, are you guys pick, put the signs out and then you guys take them down?
Yes, yes, that is one thing I forgot to mention, so they are also like relatively non-intrusive signs there. If anyone's seen like election signs that they have that have those H wire frame stakes, they just go on the ground. So we would put those up from September seventh, and then take them out on September seventeenth. So it would just be kind of in the week lead up to our virtual event, and, and we would take them, put them up and take them down for sure.
All right. Now, Mike, I guess, does this go, does this go to council, does it get, if it gets a support here? Does it need to go to council for, for further support, or where do we go from here?
I think, given the nature of it, Counselor Yake, that if, yeah, the committee's supportive, we'll note that in the minutes. Based on what I've heard, and that the minutes will get approved by council, and then, yeah, we've basically got a clear runway for Jensen and. To work with Mandy and Tom, so.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? So it's sounding, it sounds to me as if the committee is gonna, will support it, Jensen. So I think if you want to just continue getting, staying in touch with Mandy and getting it. You know, put together and organized, I think you'll, you certainly have our committee's support, and we wish you all the best.
Excellent, thank you so much for having me, and thank you very much for your support, it really does mean a lot to us, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Take care. Do you, do you want a motion to support that initiative, Mr. Chair, or Mike, or how do you want to handle that?
We could, we could formalize a motion, Counselor Millen, or we could just indicate that, you know, in the minutes that the committee member supported. The initiative, and that, you know, that once the minutes are approved, I think that will be fine. There's not, we're not actually looking for staff commitment, it's more about utilizing the space. So I, I don't think we need to formalize it necessarily through.
Okay.
Resolution at this point.
Yeah, there's no financial impact, I guess, so that's good, yep, thank you.
As long as it's in the minutes, we're, we're okay to move forward, okay, sounds good. All right, our second deputation is Kelly Dimmick, in regards to the demolition derby. Welcome, Kelly, to the committee meeting, and the floor is all yours.
All right, hello, everyone, thank you for allowing me to join your meeting and discuss my event request. My request is to rent the grounds of the arena for a demolition derby on October second. It would follow the same format that the Fireworks Festival has in July. All insurance and whatnot would be in place, all safety measures would be in place. And would be followed at whatever phase we're in at the time. This is an event that I would like to host with a new business that I've actually started in Mount Forest. It's underneath the Hometown Apparel and Boutique and Gifts, which is formerly Cynthia and Company. It's called Trackshot Tees, we're all about demolition derby and racing and. People going out and wrecking cars, at the end of the day, that's what it's all about. Profits from this event would all be going to the Chamber for Business Support. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce and, and being a business owner. Understand the difficulties that we have had over the past eighteen months, so any support that we can get business-wise would be wonderful. All cleanup and all, you know, all responsibilities that we have to give the grounds back to the. Township would be acknowledged to give it back the same way we found it. We would be having a food truck or two, that would also depend on how many people we actually have. And then there would be spectators, and that would be in accordance to whatever the government is allowing at the time. I know at this point, we're allowed fifty percent capacity for a sporting event. And that's, that's really, at the end of the day, what my proposal is. I would, just to sum it up, like to have a derby on October the second, with proceeds going to the Chamber for Business Betterment. And following all rules that would be in place at the time. And if there's any questions, I would be happy to take them.
All right, thanks, Kelly, for that, for that presentation. Is there any questions in regards to Kelly's, Kelly's request?
I, I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Tom, can I see your hand up?
With Fireworks Festival, they have the whole grounds. At the same time as this going on, we should be having our ice run, and that parking lot will be utilized by patrons for the arena. So I'm not sure how we get around that, I'm just bringing it to the attention of, of the committee here. And I don't know if you have any plans for that, Kelly, or had thought about the, in the, the arena being used. I just know when fireworks is on, they rent the whole grounds and the building, so there's nothing that can come into the building at the same time as that, so.
So to answer your question, I don't really think that I would need the inside of the arena, provided that. I could have porta potty rentals on the grounds. The only reason I would need to be inside is so that people can use the washroom, everything else would be outside. However, it is a Saturday, I don't know what the hockey schedule is, to be honest with you, I never even thought about the hockey schedule. But I would want both sides of the parking lot, I feel that I would need access to both. And, and then the derby would be in the area that it has been for the last few years with the blocks and whatnot. It's the grass area off the pavement on the west side of the building.
Okay, so, yeah, we would have no parking for running the arena events that day.
Yeah, the date, date kind of changes things a little bit in that regard.
Brian, would, would it be possible to have parking for the derby event? On the north side of the street there at the park, parking lot, the gravel lot? And, and leave the other parking for the arena event, is that? Like, put the ice hockey, or whatever you want to call it, parking on the east side of the building, is that something doable, Tom, or? I, I don't know.
It's possible, there would have to be some traffic control.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So I would be willing to have the volunteers for the traffic control. Just thinking, obviously, on the spot, because the, the rink wasn't even in my radar. Would it be possible for vehicles then to use, like, the arena activity vehicles to use the east side? Of the arena and allow me the west side and then the parking lot on the, on the north, north side there. Making sure that my directions are proper, would that be a possibility?
That's kind of where I was going, but I don't, I have no idea whether that would work or not.
I would definitely, definitely need the parking on the west side of the arena. And I'm assuming that our, our spectator allowance is more than the fifty percent that it is now, fingers crossed. We would have the bleachers in, much like the Fireworks Festival does too, so that's why I'm asking for that, that whole area.
What, what kind of spectator capacity do you anticipate?
Well, it's fifty percent now, and to my understanding, when we head into phase four. It is supposed to go to seventy-five percent, and phase four. I don't have the dates, but I do believe it's coming upon us rather soon. And fingers crossed, by the time October rolls around, that we will actually be at full capacity. As long as everyone is following the, the mask rules and, and whatever will be in place. I don't have the full answers for that at this time though, because it's all, of course, according to the control of COVID.
Yeah, what would your, what would the math, maximum amount, amount of attendance you would be able to have, if we didn't have COVID, just to figure out fifty percent?
I know in the past with the Fireworks Festival, I do believe we were in and around the a thousand, the a thousand spectators. Mark, now that also included the drivers and everyone that they brought. And then I do believe at the time, we had, I think we had actually four different bleachers. Which I'm thinking I'm only going to do two, because people can just stand as well. I think, to be fair though, I, I can't accurate, accurately answer that number. Because it's all going to depend on who wants to come out and watch, and, you know, everyone is tired of being at home right now. So I would think that a fun event such as this may generate a, a large crowd.
So Kelly, is the intent that you're, you're going to charge the attendance? So is there a, like, are you just bringing in someone, and you're bringing them into a particular area to charge them for access? So that's the intent, it's going to be roped off the area, is that the intent?
Yes, same setup as the Fireworks Festival.
Counselor Yake, would it be worthwhile to share a screen and just maybe look at the site, just so we can have a better sense of what we're, what we're talking about here? From a parking standpoint, is that?
Yeah.
Let me see.
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
I'm assuming everybody can see kind of the arena site at this point?
Again, I can see it.
So, yeah, the scrolling is over top of the existing parking area. And my understanding is kind of the derbies back in this area, Kelly, correct?
That's correct.
And then the, the seating is, is facing the derby area, but backing towards the, or the arena? Is that, is that how you guys did it, right?
You have to be, and don't quote me on this, but I do believe there has to be fifteen feet between the actual. Blocks of the event, and then where the seating starts, and I could be way off on that number, but there are, there are rules that we have to follow. To maintain the safety of the spectators.
So Kelly, your ask was about this parking lot here being for the derby. This parking lot here potentially also derby, and that this parking lot would be able to service the facility.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, yeah, I just thought, sorry, I just, for my own. Mind to wrap around what it is that we're asking about and what the intent is. So really, it would be this, this side of the facility would be the derby activities. So let's say from, I, do you have a timeline, Kelly?
I would like to start it around one or two o'clock in the afternoon on the Saturday. And then it would, I would think that it would be wrapped up by about six o'clock, as far as the cars leaving. And then, of course, we would have to take care of our cleanup. And that is largely depending on how many cars actually show up. But for the most part, derbies run, you know, four to five hours.
Mike, just, Mike, if you could just keep it up there for a second.
Okay.
So this, the south part of the parking lot, is that where are you intending to put your food trucks and, and that type of thing?
I would put the food trucks on the north's, yes, the north side of the parking lot. I would think probably closer to the building on that side would be a reasonable spot. That. Yes, that's probably where I would put them. I mean, with the Fireworks Festival, they're in the Campbell DeVore parking lot, but for this one here, I, I would not put them over there. I'd, I'd want them as close as we possibly can get them to the actual activity.
Is there, excuse me, Dan, is there, is there room? The derby itself is going to be, you know, blocked off in there. Is there room in that grassed area for your? Your, your, uh, where you're gonna park the cars as they wait to participate? Or where will, will it be a sort of a staging area for the event? Is there enough room for that there as well?
Uh, yes, there's, there's enough, the, the cars will not be in the grass area. They'll be on what is, I do believe, the gravel area as they're entering. Um, again, same, the, there's no room on the, on the uh, grass area because there's that big mound of dirt that's there.
Okay.
Um, but yes, all of the action would take place on the north side of the building. And then any cars, like truck and trailers and cars that are parked in the Campbell DeBora parking lot would come out of the parking lot. And then head uh, north on Princess and enter the, the north uh, area. If I'm describing that properly. But we could totally, we, we could um, not be involved at all with the uh, the south side of the building. And then traffic direction would definitely be taking place because we would have to make sure that um, the vehicles are, are going where they need to go versus whoever's coming for the derby activity versus whoever's there for the arena activity. And then another thing too, that will, that will be a factor is um, we're required to have uh, medical onsite. So that would have to be uh, arranged as well. And then they would have a clear path out in case of an emergency elsewhere.
I think you'd have to have um, emergency services, i.e. fire department there as well. Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Brad. So I'm just back to you, Tom. Um, is, is this something that you think can work out? I mean, I, again, it's a Saturday night, uh, you don't know really right now with the hockey or arena schedule probably is like. Is there, is the, is the hall rented for something else at that time?
I mean, I'm not. I'm not sure of the hall rental right now. I don't know that one. I know the ice will be rented. That's potential for the first Patriot game, October, the first Saturday in October.
Figures.
Yeah, that's, hopefully we keep going. We don't know where the numbers are gonna go with COVID, so.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is fencing. We'll have patrons that will come out of the arena into your event, Kelly. Should probably be fenced off, so those people can't just go wander over and watch too. You want to make your revenue. I'm thinking some of the other areas on the grounds that we do keep cut at the back of the arena or where the new pool is going to go. I don't know if it would, we could utilize that land.
That was a discussion in the past. Um, I know with the fireworks festival, because I'm actually the one that brought the derby to town for the fireworks festival. And there was a reason why I, I, I can't remember one hundred percent. But there was a reason why we were actually put on the backside of the arena versus being in that area. And I, I don't recall what that was at this time.
Okay, and I wasn't here at that time either.
Yeah, there, there's definitely a reason for it. However, if that was an option, I'd be all over that because it would definitely make things a lot easier.
Yeah, my suggestion where Mike, you had the cursor there, that land where the pool was going, I, I don't know if that's an option to utilize that. Um, then they would have that side of the building, the soccer, the soccer parking lot would be utilized. Um, and then the arena would still just stay on its own. I, I, if it's possible, I don't know if it is.
Right. Is, is there a chance that maybe uh, Kelly, you could maybe meet with Tom and, and go over the site location? So that we had just a better, if there's an alternative. I, I don't think there's, I don't think anybody's not wanting to support it. I think it's just a matter of logistics and trying to get it, get it set up. And if, if one, which Tom is not very sure of right now, is if there's a hall rental. And two, if there is ho- hockey or Patriots game, you know, the, the logistics might just be kinda won't work. So I don't know if there's an opportunity for you, Kelly, to go and meet with Tom. Tom, would you be willing to meet with Kelly and kind of go over the site and just see what uh, see what the might, the best alternative might be?
Yeah, um, I'd have no problems Thursday or Friday, Kelly, if it's possible, you, if you could come here. If we could connect and, and do a walk around.
Um, Thursday would work better for me. Is there a, a specific time?
Yeah, I have one meeting at eight thirty, so after that.
Okay, how about, do you want to do nine o'clock in the morning?
That works perfect.
All right, and then um, just an FYI, I have about forty-five minutes because then I have to open my store.
Okay, perfect.
Kelly, those dates and times that you shared, are those, are those set in stone? Is there some flexibility around that, uh, depending upon what other activities are happening?
Um, For the most part, yes, I mean, I would be willing to entertain other options. But what's happening is with um, the world kind of opening back up again, there's actually lots of derbies that are scheduled. And this was the available date that I had with the promoter. I might be able to push it a week, but then if I push it a week, then that's running into Thanksgiving weekend. And I didn't really want to do that. And then any later than um, Thanksgiving weekend is actually kind of getting too late because then we do run the risk that we're dealing with snow, which I hate to say the S word. But you know, it is a possibility. So I would really, really prefer the second um.
This is Wellington North. It doesn't snow there until December. And, and we're looking at kind of a one o'clock till six o'clock or noon till six o'clock kind of window.
Yeah, we would be um, like the derby itself would run from one till five or six o'clock or two to five or six o'clock. But the cars would start rolling in probably, you know, ten o'clock in the morning because they have to go through tech and everything. And then people just like to be the early bird and, you know, get the best parking spots and whatnot. And then the other thing too, um, for this date being picked is there's actually a few other derbies that are going on in the area. One of them being at Barney, which is um, I do believe it is the, I think it's the long weekend. Don't quote me, but there, but there's a bunch going on. So the reason why we picked our date is because in the derby world, people don't want to store their cars over the winter. So this is kind of the last derby of the season. There may be a little trickles elsewhere. But then we're counting on the car count being high because people want to finish off their cars. And you know, call it, call it the end of the season.
Okay.
Strategy of the car demolishing world. I have no idea. I, 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 I live in a, in a sheltered world.
You've been edu-, you've been educated.
Yeah, I can tell you a lot more. This is the world that I live in.
Wait, we're being recorded.
Matt, Matt, you had that question, yes?
Yep, thanks Chair McCabe. Just a question and a comment. Um, the question for Kelly, and you might have answered it, there's sort of a promoter in the background, but is that where the volunteer group comes from? Or is there a Lions group or a Chamber of Commerce group in the background? Or just where do you expect the volunteers to come from?
Well, yeah, so I'm on the Board of Directors for the Lions, the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce. And I'm also on the Board of Directors for the fireworks festival. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but I'm quite sure I can rally up some troops.
Okay, and then my other comment, it's really a comment, just the township doesn't have a rental rate. Um, Chair McCabe for like the parking lot facility. So that's something staff would just have to, have to give some consideration to as it relates to a, a rate for parking lot rentals, depending on I guess what the site is.
Okay, all right, thanks, Matt.
So I do have one more question. Um, uh, and I don't like to assume because I know that, that's what happens there. But um, after I meet with Tom and if we can come up with um, come up with a plan and the logistics work out. Can, do I have the go ahead to make this happen?
I will ask Mike to answer that question.
I'm supportive of the, of the event in principle, absolutely. As long as, yeah. Uh, yeah, Kelly, I think the support piece is there. I think typically what we'd want to do is try to iron out the issues.
Yep.
And have a recommendation that comes either to this committee or to council from staff saying, hey, we've worked it all out. And we have a participant and, and making them aware that, yeah, it's a go ahead. So I wouldn't, I would say you have the support. I wouldn't go as far as saying you have a runway at this point. We still need to work that out and there still needs to be a recommendation that our council will need to approve, so.
Okay, fair. And when is council? And, and the reason I'm asking these questions is because I'm on a time crunch too, to make sure that I get everything lined up.
Yeah, and grateful that you were able to come and we had hosted this meeting in August to allow some time for that. Uh, there are council meetings now. The next one is scheduled for the twenty-third of August. So the intent would be hopefully that these minutes from this meeting would come to that council. At that council meeting, someone would pull those minutes and we would discuss this particular issue, hopefully with a recommendation from staff.
Excellent.
Is, is that timeline okay for you, Kelly? Then what is, what is, what is it, Mike, twenty-third? Date?
When, twenty-third's the next council, yes.
Twenty-third, so is that, is that give you enough time, Kelly, if that's uh, what happens?
It's tight, but um, I really want the event to happen, so I'll make it work.
Okay, all right.
Now, do I need to attend that meeting?
Um, well, I mean, you can, I guess if it's uh, you would have to be put on as a, a delegation, Mike. Uh, if there, if, if there was any questions, any other questions, I guess, that came from council?
Yeah, Kelly, there's potential that, yeah, obviously we have one member of council here, but there may be other questions. So I would suggest that, yeah, if we're gonna pull the report, that it wouldn't be a bad idea for you to be on in case there are questions that council is looking for, so.
Okay.
Okay, and that meeting is at seven PM. And um, you know, when you get it, once, once you've had the opportunity to meet with Tom, we'll have a better sense of what direction we're heading. And then we can coordinate more in terms of what that will look like at council.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly. Thanks for the presentation. So I see that Counselor McCabe has woken up and has joined us.
Good afternoon, everybody. How are you?
Well, yeah, good day. You're just in time for a motion to adjourn, I think.
Perfect. What did I miss?
Yeah, nothing.
Yeah, I apologize. I uh, I've been called away for uh, uh, work and just got off the phone, so. I do apologize for that. I'm sorry I missed Kelly's presentation, so.
She did a smash, she did a smash up job.
So you can, uh, if you are prepared, you can assume the chair here, Steve, or we can carry on as, as need be, so.
Thanks very much, Dan.
You're welcome. We are at um, the ad hoc committee updates. Perfect. Matt, I guess I'll uh, push that over to you.
Yep, uh, thanks Chair McCabe. The, the first one is uh, the Mount Forest Aquatics Committee update. And there was a meeting called the evening of July sixth, uh, as it relates to really getting the logo approved. As well as um, requesting some sponsor, um, or some swag funding from council. And, and those have subsequently went to council and uh, those items are on order. With, and, and anticipated to be hitting the street uh, this weekend at the sidewalk sale. Um, and that's kind of a, an update of what that meeting, it was sort of very focused on the, the funding piece or requesting some funding. But certainly available to answer any questions if there are any.
Matt, did you say the uh, their, their swag is available this weekend?
Um, most recent information I have is that it, the, the plan is that it will be available this, this weekend.
Okay, great. Look forward to that, uh, and that's the sidewalk sale in Mount Forest, so that'll be good. Bring your money, uh, C- uh, Counselor Mill.
I was just wondering, is that Maple Leaf blue or is that Blue Jay blue on there? Just for the committee's awareness, uh, um, around the swag piece. So we're working out some logistics as it relates to the sales and what that means. You know, obviously we're in an environment right now where people are avoiding cash to a certain degree. So um, now with sidewalk sales and uh, things like our farmer's market, I think cash is still prevalent. And I, hopefully that will be the case. Uh, but I know that the members of the, the swag committee, let's call them. Are, you know, looking at every opportunity in terms of supporting sales. And so there is some logistics around that which complicate things. But for those on the call or attending and looking to buy swag, bring cash. That's uh, it always works, so.
Perfect. Cash uh, does wonders. Uh, any questions for uh, Matt about the, excuse me, ad hoc committee uh, special meeting or uh, comments?
Nope, I'm good.
No, none for me.
Thanks, Matt. I will uh, pass uh, on to the uh, on to the next one. It's Arthur BMX Skate Park. Uh, sorry, no, wait, uh, did you, sorry, Dan, I meant to ask, uh, did you have a recommendation for that? Like, do we have a second or a mover, a mover and a seconder? So I'll say that, that ad hoc record uh, was uh, I guess moved by Dan and seconded by uh, Deputy Mill. Sorry, I just missed that. All in favor of that recommendation? Thank you very much. I'll move on to the uh, Arthur BMX Skate Park Ad Hoc Committee. Uh, July seventh, uh, twenty twenty-one, I have a recommendation that the ref parks and leisure committee, we seek for information. The minutes of the Arthur BMX Skate Park Ad Hoc Advisory Committee Meeting of July seventh, twenty twenty-one. And I believe Mandy, you're going to have uh, our counselor Lisa Hearn in and Wayne and uh, and Alan join us from the Lions. So I will say that uh, Deputy Mayor Mellon, you moved that and uh, Dan seconded it. And we'll have a good chat about this. So I'll pass it over to you, Matt.
Well, thanks, uh, Chair McCabe. The, the minutes are included in the agenda package. And I would maybe drop particular focus to um, page three or page two of three. And specifically within bullet number two, there's some wording along the lines of "The Lions Club anticipates the fundraising accounts will reach a hundred thousand dollars combined by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one." "With all of the continued fundraising efforts and the initial estimate to build the BMX Skate Park were approximately two hundred and fifty thousand." "The committee questioned if the township would consider offering a loan to the Lions Club to close the gap on funding to complete the project in twenty twenty-two." Um, that was a big, a big item from the meeting. And I think um, the members, the members of the BMX committee are here to, to speak to those two items that were included in the, in the minutes.
Thanks, Matt. Um, Wayne or uh, Counselor Hearn, who would uh, like to go first? Or Al, would you? You're muted, Al. We gotta. There you go.
Am I on there now?
Yep, we can hear you.
I'm not used to these things. Uh, I didn't realize I was gonna be asked to speak, so I'm, I don't have any prepared notes or anything else. But uh, our, our main concern at that last meeting that we had with Lisa Hearn and Mandy was that um, for this thing to happen next July to open and start, you know, things would have to start moving this fall to get quotes and so forth. To get it uh, on the go. But we don't know right now what kind of scope is involved because of the finances. We lost a year and a half of fundraising. So we're anticipating that by the end of this year, we could have a hundred thousand dollars. So uh, what we didn't know was, do we just go with that and, and, and buy whatever that can, can buy? Or can we, uh, do we do the whole thing and, and try to work something out? So that, that was, that was, you know, where I stood.
Counselor Hearn or Wayne?
Um, I just thought maybe I would point out some, Al, uh, maybe you could point out to the committee. Um, the reasoning that you'd like to do it next, next year. Um, they may not be aware of the significance of having this done in twenty twenty-two.
Well, the, the original idea was we promoted this to be, to coincide with the hundred and, if I'm not mistaken. I think it's the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the founding of the Village of Arthur. So it was, the idea was to use that to commemorate it as well. So that, that's the reasoning for trying to do it for, let's say, the first of July next year. Anybody else, like Wayne or anybody else? Anybody like Wayne or anybody else want to add to that? Feel free.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, I might as well. Pipe up. Yeah, so we're, I think, around a hundred thousand and uh, you know, the Lions have kind of been a little kicked in the teeth. I think uh with COVID nineteen, it was certainly something that we couldn't anticipate. Um. And uh they're doing their very best uh for fundraising. Um. Number one, it's difficult going to businesses right now in in this type of climate. But number two. Um, the Lions are a little bit different um than some of the other community groups that are raising raising funds and that. This group of people, they sweat it out, right? Um, they believe in a a lot of the money um that was going towards this. Um, is earned from, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan Wayne. Um, through many of your your events like a and through your food booth at the fair. And of course, there was no Arthur Fair and there won't be one this year either. And even with um Main Street right now in Arthur, it's even hard to set up. A stand to flip hamburgers. So. Um, that's kind of part of the problem and and go jump in because you guys are the ones that that do all this work. I do nothing, so.
Yeah, basically, basically, our 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 fundraising always revolves around food. Um, we've had the one successful bar chicken barbecue last week. We've got another one scheduled for. September and hopefully November. We do have a permission from the Royal Bank to hold a. Uh barbecue and bank barbecue on the third of September. Uh, we'll be discussing that. Uh, we've got a meeting tomorrow night that we're gonna discuss our path forward, but uh. Those are basically our food-raising ideas for right now.
Um, there was a tentative date in November, too, or did you say that and I missed it?
Uh, the tentative date for chicken barbecue will probably be around the first or. First or second week in November, because if we have our, if we're able to have our. Uh craft show, that'll be around the twenty first of November, I believe, and due to our manpower. Situation, uh, we'll have to have the chicken barbecue a couple of weeks ahead of time, so we don't burn everybody out.
Fair enough. Go ahead, Dan.
So uh Al or or Lisa or Wayne, so by the end of the year. We hope to have a hundred thousand dollars in the bank from from your fundraising efforts that are continuing on. Uh. As slow as albeit is going, but you're really kind of. Gonna ask the township for a loan of a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Is that correct? To so that this project can proceed?
Yeah, that'd be the approximate amount.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
My one con- one concern I have, Dan, on that is. That up until now, we've been able, or at least the township has been able to issue tax receipts for monies donated. And incidentally, that hundred thousand includes what the township has received as well as what we have raised. That's an aggregate total. But once we, if the township steps in and 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 fronts that money and we go ahead. With the project. For us to raise the balance of a hundred and fifty thousand, I think according to the tax laws, I don't think we we or anybody would be able to issue. Tax receipts for that money. I don't know if I'm correct or not, but that's something to think about. I don't know how much tax receipts impact people's willingness to give money.
Yeah. I guess, I guess, Mike, that's more of a question for for you or the finance department, I guess, in regards to the tax receipts, but.
Yeah, I have, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, Dan.
I just was gonna say, I mean, is it something that that if we're, if this is something that we would consider? Is it something that we need to start obviously discussing now so that the Lions Club can continue their planning?
Yeah, um, if it's okay, Steve.
Please, go ahead. I was gonna ask you. Asking you to address it anyways.
Uh, yeah, I think I think there's two things at play from the township perspective and um Al raises a good point about the tax receipt piece. The thinking has typically been. We can issue tax receipts up until the point of the project completion, but what that's typically when we're. Doing, there isn't a loan kind of involved. It's a different different scenario. It's typically, we raise the funds right up till the date we start construction. This is gonna happen as well, but there's, yeah, the idea of we're fronting the money and then trying to collect donations after. So I don't, I don't have an answer for that. I guess is the short part of that. The other piece around this is that council's position, at least I think dating back to twenty sixteen, is that. For recreation enhancements. All the funds need to be in place in order for the project to go ahead. Now, what, you know, what I think the Lions are suggesting is. Hey, the funds are in place. You guys are gonna help with the funding and we're gonna continue to collect dollars. Part of the thinking around council's decision around that, and I don't want to put all the words in your mouth, was that it's really hard to fundraise for something that's already done. And Al knows that and Wayne knows that and Counselor Hearn knows that as well. If you go ahead with the project and then start trying to ask people to donate to it, it's a lot harder. When it's already there, they're like, what am I donating for? It's already built kind of thing. But that's. That's uh just a factor that will have to be considered. So those those are the two things that I think are at play. It does set a bit of a precedent. Because we have stipulated to all the other organizations who are raising funds that we don't typically get started until all the dollars. Are in place, but um those are, those are things that council will need to make a decision about.
Thanks, Mike. And uh, and one thing I might add is this might not be, might not be appetite for this, but. Is there a like a phase one that you could do for the BMX park so that the hundred thousand could start? And then we could fundraise for phase two for the other of the other hundred and fifty thousand, meaning that you could still open on the uh. On the dates that like next year that you wanted and then. Do another phase or or two phases after uh after next year. Is that? Something that you guys had considered or that the committee had considered at all?
Yes, we've we've considered that. Uh, but we still didn't have any definite ideas to whether. Can, if you split it up into two or three phases, the whole project, can you still issue receipts, let's say, on phase two donations? Or phase three donations?
Mike, I'm gonna turn to you for this one.
Yeah, it's a good question, Alan. I think as long as there is construction as part of phase two, so basically completion of phase two. My initial answer would be yes, but I think, yeah, we'd want to look into it a little bit further to make sure that that's the case. And again. Al, you raised it too, and it's a question that I raise regularly. If if tax receipts are the be all and end all as it relates to the fundraising, I think that's that. It maybe isn't. Uh, lots of people appreciate it, but it's not the primary reason, in my opinion, that people donate. And you guys, the Lions specifically, raise funds, as you said, Wayne said, a lot of food events, and there's no tax, you're not getting a. You know, you know, again, a donation receipt for, you you know, supporting the chicken barbecues and and the community does all those things because they know it's. It's for the good of the community and it's good food, so why not?
A win-win. Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, uh, two things. Um. I just wanted to ask the Lions and I I think I'm I'm aware of this number, how much you guys tip typically in a normal year pre-COVID. Um, would earn from your chicken barbecues and your your various events that you normally set up for.
Oh, gosh, we had addressed that issue a couple of years ago, I think Wayne will recall. And that was when Brent was attending the meeting. We had, we had come up with a rough number of what we could raise.
I believe it was around fifty thousand.
Yeah, I I believe it was between fifty and sixty is what I kind of penciled.
Now, that's a, that's a normal year. I don't know what's normal anymore. Um, and I don't know if that number would be valid. It's hard, it's very hard to say. We 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 thought by this time we would be at around the two hundred thousand mark. We only have that, you know, it's hard to say. Uh, but if uh. If going the lone route, if you want to call it a financing route by the township, is that difficult, then. Well, maybe we just gotta do what we call phase one, put a big slab down and and put the uh skateboard uh. Skateboard ramps and stuff and all that phase one. I don't know, maybe, maybe that's what we gotta do. I mean, if I remember correctly, uh. The quote I had from Canadian Ramp at the time was about fifty thousand for the skateboard ramps. And and we had estimated twenty or or thirty thousand or something like that for for the concrete slab. So. Now, the prices would have gone up, but I'm I'm hoping that a hundred thousand should at least get us phase one. I don't know, but we won't until we go.
But. I guess, when was the last time you would have been talking to the uh the installers or the the uh the company?
Oh, it was, they they contact me once in a while just to make sure that the project is still alive and I. I reassure them that we're still working on it. And of course, they understand the position we've been in, not being able to raise funds for a long time. Uh, but I haven't had any direct contact with them about pricing or anything since they gave me the original quotes, which is. Probably what, two years ago or maybe even more by now.
Okay. Uh, Lisa, I saw you had your hand up there.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to add that that's not necessarily the company that we're going to go with. Because if we follow, would follow the township's policies, then um. The reasoning for the timing right now is that we need to. Issue the request for proposal. Is that though? That's correct, Mike. Mike's listening.
Yep. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, typically, yeah. Yeah, a project of this scale, we'd issue a request for proposal and yeah, see who submitted. We anticipate, yeah, Canadian ramps who. Our reference would be one of those, but uh there may be others that would want to to make a fair. Submission or around, yeah, a skateboard park.
Mm-hmm. But if we're going to get it done in the timeframe that that we need to next year, or at least even a phase thereof, we need to figure out. Now, um, what is gonna be included in that um so that we can get that done?
Yes, you need the scope of supply.
Right.
Fair enough. Uh, Matt, I saw you come online. Is there a? Have an addition additional, excuse me, comment? Excuse me.
Oh, no, thank, thanks, Chair McCabe. Yeah, I was just gonna echo what Lisa said as it relates to. The township's procurement policy and probably a RFP would need to be out in in October in order. To kind of meet a July first timeline, I think. If you work it back where the tendering periods. Four forty days and then um it has to go to council for award. And then they have to order the equipment. So I I think it's good we're having this conversation in August, cuz cuz October comes pretty quick.
What the, if uh say council does not want to do the loan, uh say, I'll play devil's advocate for. A minute or two um and and be the bad guy that usually Mike is. Um, say council says, no, we're not in the interest of this. We have a policy that you guys have to have all your money upfront before. Uh, you know, work goes ahead. Are you that, would you guys be okay with phasing it as we suggested?
Well, I don't think we would really have any other choice.
Yeah.
Um, we want to try and honor the the promises we made about having this in place for next year. Uh, I, you know, I guess half a loaf is better than no loaf at all. Uh, but in addition to what Matt said about having the uh RFP or or RFQ go out by October. Uh, one other thing I think probably needs to be cleared is that the actual location, uh make sure there's nothing in the ground. That we don't know about.
Oh, I see what you mean, like do locates.
Yeah. There shouldn't be anything there, but you can't guess.
Yeah. I wouldn't uh, I wouldn't uh throw all my weight behind that for sure. Alright, uh, thank you very much for this. Um, Lisa, it looked like you almost were gonna raise your hand there.
Yeah, just, yeah, another point that I just thought of just for your consideration, yeah, and and Al brought this up, I think, is that um. When people donated to this and have contributed to it, they have contributed to the entire concept. And if we break it down into phases, then I don't know, hopefully, they're happy to contribute to a phase, but. Not necessarily. So it's just something to think about.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, uh, it's good to have uh all options on the table for sure. Uh, you guys, uh, line members, Alan and Wayne, do you have uh any more comments or uh? Questions for us?
I don't think so. At this time, I'd just like to thank council and and this committee for inviting us to attend. And uh, it's always good to have open communications and then we all know where which direction we're going. So, thank you.
Thank you and thanks for joining us tonight. Alright, thank you very much. I have the recommendation on the uh on the table to uh receive those minutes. All in favor? Perfect. Thank you very much. Alright, we will move on to.
Matt, Matt has a question, Steve.
Sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Yep, sorry, Chair McCabe. I just wanted to, so coming out of that conversation, I think the township is gonna try to answer some questions for. That committee related to donation receipts and specifically the phasing. Um, but is is that, is the BMX Committee going to make a a formal ask? Is that kind of how? I'm just trying to understand how it looks coming out of today or what, what the expectation is coming out of today.
Go ahead, Mike.
My uh recommendation, um, Chair McCabe, is that when these minutes come to council. Is that you poll this particular subject and we discuss with council the idea of phasing. Or the loan or uh. Whatever we want to call it at that point, and we have a decision that we can share with the back with the Lions.
Okay, and then uh direction to staff as well. Okay, that sounds good to me.
I my, and I I don't want to overstep as it relates to the committee, but I I believe that the committee would probably prefer. Prefers maybe not the right word, but would want that decision to happen at council. So poll this portion of the minutes. We have that wholesome conversation with council and then that can go back to the Lions so they understand which direction. Council prefers.
Okay, that sounds good. Alright, thanks, Matt. Thanks, Mike. Alright, we've approved that already, so that's good. Thank you very much. And uh I will pass it uh over to uh to you, Tom, for the uh Arthur Arena floor update.
Oh, thank you, Chair McCabe. Um, yeah, for the most part, the uh Arthur Arena floor is pretty much complete. Uh, there's a little bit of work left to do on the boards. Board ads have to go up. Um, HBY is gonna come in and clean the place up, get the dust and everything up, uh but they should be out of there in the next couple of weeks, I believe. Um, some really nice work, some new things in the boards that we haven't had in the past and don't have in Mount Forest. Uh, some new kick plates along the outside, the outside of the boards are all covered in. Um, things that you guys may not be interested in, but from a maintenance standpoint, uh even the board glass, the partitions, the whole things up, the whole the glass up. There's no more screws in them. It's all, you push it up and it comes out. So.
Wow.
Uh, just maintenance, maintenance issues that you don't have to deal with in the future, so. Um, very good. The one, once they're out of there, our staff are gonna take and we'll power scrub all the floors. Get the place cleaned up, um, seal the floor and paint the lacrosse lines on for next year so that they're in place. Come springtime when the lacrosse players want to get on that floor. But we're all, it's been a good job and it looks really good. If you get a chance, stop in, take a look.
Yeah, I was in, thanks very much, Tom. Yeah, I was in a couple of weeks ago and Christine and I took a quick tour and uh, you know, it. It just looks pristine with no uh puck marks on the board or anything like that. It's kind of, kind of eerie to see it like that. And then uh. Even the back of the boards having that uh covered up as well. Um, just, I think adds to uh to less maintenance as well. The the wood and the aluminum's not uh. Um, like the supports aren't showing, so hopefully that makes a lot, well, looks a lot cleaner.
Yes.
Cleaner lines and then uh hopefully makes it easier for uh for us uh to to keep it clean as well, so.
No, no place to set your coffee when the, when the back of the boards are covered up now.
No, that's right. That's right. Thanks for that, Tom. Uh, any questions uh from the committee for Tom? Alright, thank you very much, Tom, and uh. We have a recommendation to the red parts. We have a recommendation that the rec parts and leisure committee received for information, the verbal. Uh, arena floor update. I will say that was moved by member Yake and seconded by a member Milne. All in favor? Great, thank you very much. I'm going to the next. We have items for considerations. It's correspondence that we put out to the Arthur Seniors Hall, Damascus Community Hall. And I have a recommendation that the rec parks and leisure committee received for information, the correspondence with. Arthur Seniors Hall and the Damascus Community Hall. I'll say that was moved by member Milne and seconded by uh, member Yake and. I will pass this over to you, Matt.
Yep, um, thanks, Chair McCabe. Those are just a continuation of the correspondences that we've uh, been having. With those two facilities. Um, you'll note that the Damascus Hall, it's kind of opened up to really just. Um, we expect that to be the last letter and the, the protocol going forward will just be to follow provincial and public health guidelines. Um, and with the Arthur Senior Center, we recommend it closure till the end of the month. Uh, but we expect to continue that closure. Uh, again, we're doing this in, in conjunction with talks with the, the seniors, but I, I think the seniors recognize that. Some of the programming that they do at that facility isn't, isn't necessarily conducive to social distancing and they've been accepting and agreeable. To, to the closure and we've been agreeable to, to waiving the fees, so. With the Arthur Senior Center, we probably plan on doing that for, for at least September and potentially October in, in consultation with them. Um, and the Damascus Hall will really just be left to operate um, by provincial and public health guidelines. And just a thanks to Mandy for facilitating and, and working with, with those groups, um, just to make sure we're on the same page and. I don't think by the time we send those letters, Chair McCabe, that those are surprises, which is uh, which is a good thing.
Oh, and I think all along, uh, having this communication with both the uh, the committees there in Damascus and the seniors has been good throughout uh. Uh, this strange pandemic, so. Yeah, and I think it makes sense with uh, with what we're doing, especially with the social distancing and the uh. Arthur Seniors Hall, it's fairly small and tight, so you couldn't really get into it anyways with the, with the, a big crowd, so. Thank you for that, Matt. Um, any questions from the uh, committee?
No, I don't think so.
Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, uh, Chair McCabe, and, and Matt, I'm just wondering on the, excuse me, the senior center in Arthur. Um, and, and I'm not familiar with the building or the facility, but I'm just wondering from a standpoint of. Uh, allowing the seniors to kinda get out in a boat. Um, would there be any consideration given to, and I would think most seniors are now double vaxxed. Would there be any consideration given to activities? You know, restricted to those that are double vaxxed and, you know, just to try to. Allow the facility to be used in some way.
Through, through you, Chair McCabe. Um, like I think the township would be open if they wanted to have their board meetings there. Cards, cards represent a large, large component of their programming and because cards. Because cards are closer contact, um, they've been agreeable at this time to, to kind of continue with. With the closure, but I think the township's open, open to those conversations. Um, and as things develop, we're. Yeah, we're, we're open to, to getting it o- open more soon, soon, but I think really cards is a, is a big mainstay as part of their programming and because of that. Um, I think they've been, they, they probably like the waiver of fees and they. Um, maybe don't, don't have the programming that would, that would allow for them to feel comfortable at this time. It's kind of what the, the correspondence has been.
Yep, okay, no, that's good. Maybe bigger tables.
Electronic, online.
Yeah, maybe, thank you.
Thanks for that, uh, Brian, and thanks for that, Matt. Um, I don't have any questions. I think, like I said, uh. It's good to be in communications with them and uh, we'll move forward as we, as we can. I have that recommendation on the uh, on the table and uh, I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Thank you very much. Um, I will go to the uh, round table. Um, I'll start with the distinguished member from Southgate.
Oh my god. Is, is he here?
Question, comments at all?
Where is he? Uh, no, I, I have, I have nothing, uh, Chairman McCabe, I appreciate the invite. The, the hour of the day kinda sucks. I know Mike, uh, he's working overtime, so, well, Matt is too, I guess, so. Anyway, that's good, thank you.
No, and thanks for making that time switch first. It didn't actually work good for me as you.
Well, yeah, the meeting did start at four o'clock. You've only been here for a few minutes, so.
I can go all night now, though. Yeah, but no, thanks for making that switch, uh, Ryan, appreciate that. Uh, and while, and the whole committee and the, and staff as well, uh, member Yake.
Oh, I'm okay. I, I do appreciate the change in time, though, for the meeting. It worked out, uh, works better for me, so. I do appreciate it and uh, again, I just like, you know, thanks to all this, all staff that are involved with recreation and. And parks and everything else for their efforts and. Um, keeping things going for the last. You know, year and a half and uh, hopefully we can uh, get off to a good start. Uh, you know, this fall and, and carry on, so just thanks to everybody for their hard work.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, it's nice to see kind of a, hopefully, uh, an opening uh, across Ontario for sure, and um, I think. Over this last year and a half, rec, well, council, but rec in general, I think has, has done a lot with what uh, what has been thrown at them and uh, and. Opportunities through this kind of a pandemic to, to do some, uh, do a lot of projects actually and, and keep moving ahead, so. Thanks very much for that. Uh, anyone else, Mike or Matt or Tom or Mandy, any, uh, yeah, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Chair McCabe, with your indulgence, I'm gonna try and share screen again. There's been, um. And this is very high level and I don't wanna get into too many specifics, but I did wanna share it with the committee. Um, recently. Uh, now I can't find where it was I was looking for. I'll maybe just give you the uh, verbal at this point. Recently, uh, a developer in the Mount Forest area approached. With the concept of, um, those of you guys that are familiar, I think you are, with the area or. Uh, unopened section of Birmingham Street that runs out towards London Road. Um, a developer's approached the township about. Uh, basically the request is that that would remain an unopened section of road and that it would become a walking trail. And that this developer would contribute towards the walking trail and leaving it in that state. Um, which comes across as a very good idea, something that I think we've thought about from a staff perspective for a number of years. The challenge around that is that section of town right now is very heavily being developed and. Whether or not Birmingham extended as a roadway is gonna be needed to actually address the traffic that comes from that development. Is something that we're trying to give consideration to. Um, but I just wanted to share that these are the type of app or opportunities that do come forward every once in a while and that we. From a staff perspective, try to wrestle with the pros and cons associated with this. Certainly, it's a novel idea. Um, the, the, the section is used as a unofficial trail right now and has been for a number of years. But there was a reason at one point that it was designated as a road, although it's an unopen road. So it, it gets complicated, uh, never as simple as probably it should be. But I did want to share with the committee that there's, we have been approached around this. One of the things that's happening right now is there's lots of development on Wellington Street East, very close by, and we've asked the developer who's. Doing that work to invoke a traffic impact study to give a sense of whether or not the roads in the area. Are suitable to deal with the new traffic that will come online with all the development, so when we have that information. It gives us a little bit more to work with whether or not we would ever need to open Birmingham, so. Uh, I share it because it's uh, it's interesting, it's unique. Uh, but it is the type of things that we're seeing now that we are very heavily developed, um. And more development opportunities are coming. These type of things are things that we're trying to address to make sure we have suitable green space. Trails, recreation activities combined with all of the new residents that are, are coming to Mount Forest.
Thanks for this, Mike, and uh, and thanks for that information. I know it's in the. First step is, was there some sort of a timeline or anything put on that at all, or just kind of more for information?
At, at this point, it's really just information. It's not something that we can really address. Until we have a better sense about the traffic impacts and whether or not Birmingham will need to be open to address the traffic, I guess, so. We don't wanna make a hasty decision without knowing the long-term implications. Patience, patience isn't necessarily my virtue, but uh, sometimes it needs to be.
No, thanks. No, no worries. Thanks very much. Uh, Matt, you had your hand up as well?
Yep, uh, thanks, Chair McCabe. Just a couple items for committee's awareness. Um, the con, the RFP for the concept design for the Mount Forest outdoor pool is out on the market. Um, so it closes in, in about mid-September. I don't remember the exact date, but there has been lots of pickups, so that. Um, that's out there, looking, looking to solicit someone who, a consultant who can help us come up with some concepts for. Um, that outdoor pool. The other one that's went out, and it just went out yesterday, is an RFP for an emergency generator at the Mount Forest. Uh, and District Sports Complex, so that's something that internally we've talked about for a long time as far as just having a. Having an emergency generator there, um, so that's out, uh, that's out for pickup now. Um, we're working on recruitment for a full-time recreation worker, so that's something that's ongoing. And yeah, day camp and the aquatics program are, I guess, past the midway point now in terms of we're in, into August, but. Um, yeah, lots of kids that are happy on a daily basis getting to go to camp or go swimming and. Um, lots of work that goes in behind that too, so. Um, our, our aquatics and our day camp team have been doing a great job. Um, providing that service for the, for the community and, and Mandy's been leading the charge, so just wanted to. Just wanted to highlight those four items for committee.
Thanks, Matt, and uh, yeah, I have heard that the day camps are, are most welcomed by uh, the kids and parents, actually, as it turns out. And uh, yeah, it's great, uh, we have a great quarterback, uh, in Mandy, so kudos to her as well. Uh, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, uh, Steve. Uh, Matt, is the RFP to replace what's already there, or is this a new? Uh, generate, emerge generator, because I thought the arena, I call it the arena. Community center, I thought it was an emergency shelter, like the warming center or whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, you go ahead, Matt.
Sorry, I didn't mean to poke the bear. Maybe I, I was impolite in asking that question, but I, I'm innocently gonna ask it.
Yeah, so the facility does not have a, have a generator. Uh, when that facility was built, there was a. Concrete pad put in to place a generator. The ductwork has been installed to, to root the cable into the. Electrical room and a manual transfer switch was installed, but. The actual generator itself was never installed as part of the original facility build, so um, yeah, it's an emergency. An emergency center, but right now it's lacking an emergency generator, which this RFP will look to resolve.
I see, so a stationary bicycle won't cut it.
You're more than welcome to try it out, though, Brian.
Oh, hey, you know, you might be able to, an exercise center to run some wires, I don't know. Try it. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks, Brian, thanks, Matt, and I think, Mike, correct me. I don't know how many meetings ago it was that we thought we better have a generator for an emergency uh. Area for uh, for the arena to be a.
Yeah, maybe.
Transition period for us. So, yeah, I can't remember how many months ago we did that, uh, Brian, so.
Okay. Good to know.
Yeah, we're.
It's certainly been talked about for more than just months.
Yeah, we're, we're finally getting around to it, so. So, thanks, thanks for bringing that up. But uh, I uh, I don't have anything, um. And there's nothing else from Mandy or Tom. I have a, a recommendation that the uh. Township of Wellington North Recs Park Leisure Committee meeting of August tenth, twenty twenty-one be adjourned. Excuse me, at five thirty, right on time, I might add. Uh, even with my late appearance. Uh, no, I did, uh, in all seriousness, did wanna thank everyone for uh, making the time change and I do apologize for being late, but uh, thanks very much. I will say that that was moved by Counselor Yake and seconded by Deputy Mayor Milne. All in favor? Thanks very much. We uh, we are adjourned. Thanks again for uh, taking time this evening or this afternoon and uh. Have a good evening, stay dry and uh, we'll see you, everyone, soon.
Yeah, talk to you later. Bye now. Good to be.